After that, before I will play this one.
Uh, yes, uh, this one guy called Okusha Nita, the primary tab, uh, APM. Hmm, APM, but then we now continue with, um...
APM not here, I understand. APM is in the house, I understand.
Uh, yes, I know, within better job side music to usher him in, that is, it's normal.
We fill them the two down, eh? Thank you, great.
Uh, come on, yeah. So, um... Uh, um, two minutes, two minutes. Yeah, man. Thank you, thank you. Uh, 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 I don't know if the primary, if the APM is already in?
Uh-huh, okay.
So, thank you. Um, I hope the APM, uh, the APM is already in. That one, oh, thank you, and good evening. Good morning. Uh, five, five, five. Okay, uh, five, five, five.
Yes.
Okay, um, APM Abata.
The honorable APM, are you here, please?
Uh, because, I know, but as I said before, I go in with, uh, um...
Yeah, we go on with the, we go on with the music.
With the national, uh, okay, that's with the national, and, yeah, and normally, this music, we have a little bit of Abata, na obo. And so that we continue. Okay, so, I want, I mean, I have, we can go, go on with the...
APM Abatala, okay, let us...
This meeting is being recorded in progress.
One minute silence for our fallen heroes. May the soul of our holy fallen heroes continue to walk and protest those that is alive. Uh, one minute silence, please.
Thank, uh, thank, um, is it a minute silent have been observed?
Yeah, yeah, it's okay, everything is okay.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you all fellow Biafrans, good people of Biafra, uh, honorable APM, thank you sir for honoring our call. You are welcome. Honorable ministers in the house, you are also welcome. Good people of Biafra, ministers, reps, friends and well wishers of Biafra. You are all welcome to today's town hall meeting of Aloudo State, near the factor, not homeland. It is an honor that you all stand up today to grace the occasion. So before we proceed, uh, we are going to hand over this event to the Almighty, to God of Biafra. So I will call on honorable My Jesus, uh, please to, uh, lead us in opening prayer. Uh, My Jesus...
Let us pray. Hallelujah. I want to, I want to... I want to pray, but before I do that, I want to ask if our onion do... Onion do the prayer of our onion do is... It can be reached, so that we can, you can lead us in prayers.
Uh, okay, uh, you want our onion do's famous prayer. Uh, honorable, uh, uh, Van, 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 please, uh, can, uh, do you have onion do's, uh, a famous prayer? Yeah, what's up?
Just send it to me.
Uh, uh, come, send it to our cultural group, come send it there, yeah.
Send it now, what's up? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, uh, sorry.
Send it, what's up, oh?
Okay, thank you, let's go ahead, please.
Yeah, let us pray. Only why I, 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 we thank you because you are mighty God. There is nothing you cannot do. When your people call you, answer them. We say, answer us in the name of Jesus. Uh, no man can do anything without you. You are the only God that can do the possibilities. You said by strength shall no man prevail. It is not even he that will it. Nor he that run it. It is God that showeth mercy. Papa show us mercy. We have died in mass. We have struggled. We have passed through excruciating pains. Please Papa have mercy upon us. We desire this our nation. We desire Biafra. Papa give us Biafra. In the name of Jesus. And as we gather today, may your spirit lead us. All that we are going to do today, may bring peace. We don't desire a Biafra that will be like Nigeria. We desire a place we shall call our own. And therefore Jehovah, we are praying, we cannot do it. Our APM cannot do it. Our PM cannot do it. Onion do cannot do it. Only you can do it. Papa come and do it for us. Thank you Father. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
He said...
He said, he said, he said... Thank you. Thank you for that powerful prayer. So, uh, like always, we've, uh, given ourselves and our activities today to God Almighty. We've started in earnest today's, uh, program, today's occasion. The Aloudo Town Hall Meeting with the APM, Biafra Regional Government in Eza and the factor government in homeland. We have a few activities to take on today. And we hope it's gonna be a memorable event, a remarkable one for everyone of us. And we all know why we are here, and why we have gathered together. It's all for one purpose, which we've all agreed have been troubling us for quite some time, and that is restoration of Biafra, liberation of Biafra, freeing ourselves, freeing our people, freeing our children, born and unborn. And ensuring that that land is a land of honey and gold, as was promised to us. And we're also thankful that the APM have answered our call alongside his ministers, cabinet members, and Biafrans, both Aloudo citizens and friends and well wishers of Aloudo. We are going to start in earnest, because we are already behind time. I will have said more, but, uh, we don't have time. And please, uh, today, when we enter proper into this occasion, if you have a time to, uh, address us, please let it be brief, very short. So that we'll be able to cover all that we've, uh, stated or selected to achieve today. And we have first on the program the introduction, formal introduction of the state administrator, newly appointed state administrator of Aloudo State. We want to introduce him to all Aloudo citizens with a formal presentation to the people and former swearing in by the acting prime minister of Aloudo, so that he were in earnest. Take up this challenge and guide Aloudo to greater heights. I want to introduce honorable Mazie Emeka Oby, to please come up and then bring along his cabinet members who he want to be swaddled in today, so that APM will give them that mantle of leadership and bless them as is rightly supposed to be. So honorable Emeka, please, uh, come up and then, uh, introduce your cabinets that you want to be swaddled in with you today.
Now, Aloudo, they wanna... They will...
Uh, this is, um, honorable Mazie Emeka.
Yes.
Sorry, please.
Um, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big honor today for me to stand before you to present, uh, the newly nominated elected cabinet member of the new Brigi Aloudo executives. Like I've been mentioning in everything I write.
Yes.
Everybody here is entirely new. We operated, holding several portfolios in the former Aloudo government until the madness came up. Um, this SA then decided to pinpoint some people who refuses to dance to his tune and throw them out. But what do we do? Do we end up there? The answer was no. So we organize ourselves, nominate ourselves, and decided to form a new government under Ogen Kere and walk ahead. I will call our name now, please. Uh, if I call your name, raise your hand, I am going to...
Alright, honorable, uh, please, uh, we will, uh, do that later. Um, APM said that we can, um, uh, skip this, uh, uh, program now, because you have something, you have an important, uh, uh, call to attend, uh, something that you have to do. So we, we, we'll revert to this, uh, event later on.
Okay.
So, uh, that means, uh, okay, uh, whichever way, you can also, uh, introduce them by name. And then later, we just call them up for the, uh, official, uh... So that, uh, you just mentioned them by name, they can also say one or two things, or resolve their thing, so that we break color nod, because we have to welcome our guest also.
Alright, okay, I start with myself. Uh, Mazie Emeka, you as the state SA. Um, the second person is, uh, the deputy SA, honorable Liza Otta. Can you show your face?
I'm here. I'm here, Bob.
Okay, okay. Okay, have you done that?
Yes, sir, I raise my hand, yes.
Alright, may I call on the state secretary? Mazie S U N My Jesus. May I call on, uh, Mazie Christian Ayo, the works and transport ministry head.
They buy, they buy in there, one of... They will... Can they work, can they work, can they work?
They will.
And the next person is a labor and productivity commissioner, Mazie Ugogji O. Mazie Ugogji on air, acknowledge. I know Mazie Ugogji is in here, but I don't know why...
I pass the match to him.
Yeah, yes, Ugogji is here.
Uh-huh. Is the commissioner for health and social services, Dr. James, you. Dr. James, can you greet the house? Hello, Dr. James.
Doctor, Doctor James is here.
Yeah, I give him a top hand, nobody like him, look.
Alright. He doesn't want to say hi to the house. Is, uh, interior and homeland security, Mr. Mazie Agwai. He still, he still, he still trying to come in, he hasn't come in, and, um... last but not the least is the Women and Children Affairs Ministry led by Mwada Ijoma I. Mwada Ijoma. Can you say hi to the house? Okay, those are, those are the members of the cabinet here present. They were, they are, they are, they are available. Thank you.
So, thank you. So, uh, thank you. You are all welcome. It's our pleasure to annoy you. Um, S A, I think your acceptance speech will be reserved, um, for a later, later time. Uh, after the swearing in. So I think, uh, you have the, uh, the bar now. You can present the color knot to be broken. Uh, because that is the next in the agenda, breaking of color knot. So, uh, it's your bar, you call up somebody to bring the color knot for us.
Okay, um, it's time to present a color knot. I call on honorable Namak to present to the house the Aludho Color Knot. Mazie Namak, over to you.
I think, can you say the Ogji?
Yes, sir.
Ogji, ogji, ogji. And the critique, Ebia. Make effort. I know. I know, see, obviously, you. You could. Okay, 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 one. Oh, boom, quasaga, be a good Roger. Now you're more by be a good Roger. Now you're Zima, be a good Roger. Now you're fine, be a bono, now you're. Now you're liberta, be a good Roger. Now you go, otaba, now you go, otaba. Oh, yeah. But what more you don't know. Be a good Roger. Now, Kalunde. A map. Oh, no, be a good Roger. Now, what, no, no, I didn't. I'm mad, be a good Roger. Now, I'm a man. I'm a dead dog, I'm a goo. Oh, no, 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 be a good Roger. Even I'm more bad, but see, I need to find one time, I would end up, oh, oh. Would I, no, would I, oh, oh. Oh, totally, I'm a bono, gee. If you see, I'm a bono, gee. But see, I'm a bono, gee. I'm a little bit, I'm a bono, gee. E K, I'm a bono, gee. Oh, yeah, I'm a bono, gee. I'm from, I'm a bono, gee. I'm from, I'm a bono, gee. Oh, for, I'm a bono, gee. I don't want to, I'm a bono, now you're. Oh, my, I'm a bono, now you're. Come on, let's see, yeah, yeah, blue. Oh, take it, I'm a number. Oh, no, be a bono, now you're. Who do mine mean? Oh, no, be a bono, gee. If you're a condition, okay. Oh, no, be a bono, now you're. If I'm dirty. Oh, no, be a bono, now you're. Even I'm more bad, but see, I need to find one time, I would end up, oh, oh. Oh, no, would end up, oh, oh. Move for, you're cushy, I don't go, you know, well, I know, never, and bass, oh. Man, they were, you see, I knew, yeah. More, yeah, totally, oh. Miss, yeah, what, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Yeah. E K, I'm a good Roger.
Mm hmm.
I watch, I watch, eh, K. Do I want, oh, yeah. Do I want, oh. Do I want, ah, for? I don't know, never, I value. Now, I'm a person, you see, I, oh, our APM, okay, you can carry. I see, only, we're so, gee, we're sandal. I know, I see, eh, be, be, eh, oh, go, be, eh. Guess you leave, eh, 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 eh.
Eh, wo.
Oh, oh, I'm a sinking, yeah, yeah. Come on. What do more, see, maybe, why you get, eh? Why I got free farmer? Why I got free farmer, oh, totally?
He said, wo.
Why I got free farmer, eh, eh?
He said.
Why I got free farmer, eh, eh?
He said.
Why I got free farmer, eh, eh?
He said.
Why I got free farmer, eh, eh? Why I got, oh, yeah, why I got, oh, yeah, oh.
He said.
If I'm be able, how do I do, mama?
He said, wo.
He said.
He said. He said.
He said.
That move, I'm a good Roger, ten thousand, eh, gee. Now, I'm a good Roger, I'm a, oh, oh, no, can, oh.
Ah, oh, cow, oh. Email, eh, so, uh, oh, no, 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 um, oh. All that are here present, the color knot have been broken. Uh, as, uh, as we used to do, normally Namake who have passed the color knot to the youngest to pass around for everybody to pick. But the circumstances does not permit that. So everybody here, uh, have the right to pick the color knot by him or herself. The men pick the color knot, the women, at unzo, um, do more, yes, why, at oji. Um, you can have one, one, so, so please, the floor is open. We must. Yep.
Honorable, okay.
And they will.
Yes, without much protocol, now, I'm a body, you're in, now, we're, now, we're, we're, eh. I'm a, you're in, put it one door, do all of me, one, now, we're.
Okay.
Aludho, oh, no, que, wo.
Eh, yeah.
Brigi Cabinet Member, she represent, Mama, no.
Yeah. Mama.
They were, no, no, I, yeah.
They were.
I made it twenty thousand, eh, eh, Roger, eh, Roger.
Eh, gee, eh, gee.
Twenty, twenty thousand, eh, gee.
Eh, wo.
They were.
They were.
Uh, so, uh, uh, thank you. The Ogji, Agah, Agah, he was, eh, did not miss road. Come on, open, eh, oh, the, oh, the, eh, eh, one, one. Uh, Namake, oh, the, oh, so, so, I'm a, eh, eh. So, uh, our, our talk is still, uh, it is still in order. Please, the color knot, um, must be eaten. So let us, uh, in earnest, uh, pick the color knot, eat it, and also embrace the peace that is, uh, with it today. Maka, uh, has no, you were trying to, you were trying to, can I?
Well, sandal.
So, yes, so please, uh, let us pick the color knot.
I can't know what I do.
Uh, okay, uh, uh, go on, uh, uh, honorable.
Yes. Ch, 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 Aludho, can, wo.
Yeah.
Aludho, can, wo.
Yeah.
The end, wo.
Yeah.
One, wo.
Wow.
Yeah. On I, yeah, eh.
I will, eh, wo.
Nda Aludho, Nda Aludho, na, yeah, eh.
Yeah.
No, yeah, no, yeah, on I, yeah, eh.
Yeah.
And they were.
Can, wo, can, wo. You, you all are very welcome to Aludho. Um, uh, on behalf of, uh, Abam County, oh, eh, I'm, oh, this district, eh? I'm, uh, half of one, a half of two, a heck, eh, eighteen, and Ovuku. So, on behalf of these four, these five districts, make the album, county. Mazie, I'm a, eh, twenty thousand, eh, gee, eh, Roger, can, wo.
You are welcome. So, uh, please, um, uh, one special announcement. Uh, this polar, every county, every county, uh, have to be represented. They should come up and pick the color knot, uh, whether, uh, regardless of if you are in America, Tafanjan, Jamaica, or not cool. Eh, come and pick the color knot for your county. Represent your county, please. And make sure your county's name is hard today, represented, so it is open, everybody. You don't have to wait for the county chairman or chaplain. You can, uh, uh, as well, come up and pick a color knot in, uh, honor of your county. Thank you. Uh, honorable, uh, Yousa, go on.
Cha, 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 Aludho, one.
Yeah.
This, eh, 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 kelela. Nde, be a, be a, eh, so, eh, be a. Namake, wo, yeah, you tabbo. You tabbo, in the chair, no, no, I'll have, eh, oh, you to, in the, eh, eh.
I'm, eh, eh, I'm, eh, eh.
Eh, eh, so, that's, eh, you have, eh, eh, be a, yeah, I'm, eh, them. That's, eh. I, eh, gee, good Roger. Uh, no, cause, can, eh, eh. You, who, eh, eh, no, I could, eh. Come on, for, so, I'm, oh, gee, eh, eh. Yeah, brunde, oh, la, oh, bye, oh, oh. What, find, eh, eh, ju, oh, oh. Yeah, brunde, car, don, oh. What is, eh, 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 eh. Yeah, bring, eh, 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 eh. What, eh, 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 eh. Kay, da, gazi, ja, gazi, eh. I don't want, eh, 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 eh. I, eh, counties, eh? I, eh, oh, Coco County. I, eh, make a county. I, eh, mono, eh, I, eh, mono, eh, I make, I make a county, then eh. I don't want, eh, Amaku County. They are, eh, 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 eh. County. Ime County, oh, who, eh, di, kota, eh, eh. That's, eh, what, eh, guru, twenty thousand. Good Roger. Nde, wu, no.
They were, na, yeah.
They were. Um, honorable, uh, Ugogji. You're be a good Roger, they were.
Cha, 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 fun.
Yeah.
Cha, 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 ti, Aludho, fun.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Baba, Baba, please open my video. Can I have my video open?
Uh, uh, Baba, ma. Five, five, five. Uh, uh, my, eh, video, eh, eh.
Baba, yeah, but the, eh, eh, the host. Okay, okay. Baba, ba, ba. I can go on.
Yeah, go on.
Yeah, I can go on, yeah. They were. Eh, wo. Mo, Ugogji, on, okay. It's one more good issue, county. And now, and you're good, you su, can, tell me, we're Roger. With.
Uh, yes, uh, Ugogji.
Camera, cap, camera.
Video.
Camera. Ogji, Ugogji, Mazie Ogji. He refused to open, okay. Alright, thank you. Thank you. They were. So, eh, eh, I, eh, I, oh, this, oh, this, county. I may, we're Roger with, um, thirty dollar, thirty, eh, gee, eh, gee, ma.
Okay.
Then, eh, I have more, I may, we're Roger with twenty.
Eh, gee, ma.
And, eh, but I do, eh, eh, my happy, eh, eh, go on. So, eh, eh, we have said, eh, come, eh, our, eh, bo, eh, PM, welcome. With hundred, eh, gee, ma. Total, one hundred and fifty, eh, gee, ma. I will send the receipt to.
Uh, thank you.
Our, eh, I may send you a receipt. Of mother, eh, eh, gee, ma, to our, eh, eh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
The, the corner, uh, everybody, everybody that is here is similarly a visitor. You must eat color knot today. Eh, color knot cannot be eaten by the man who serve it alone. So it is for everyone of us. Come and pick the color knot, please. So, uh, on my own side, uh, since this, uh, color, uh, color have been broken. Uh, I also want to use, uh, uh, fifty, eh, gee, ma for Imeni County.
Oh, no, control, eh, 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 eh. Come, thank you so much.
At, on the come.
Is it, is it, is it, is it? For Imeni County.
For Imeni County.
Imeni County, yes.
So, please, color knot, color knot, color must be eaten. We are not eating color knot alone. The women are also have to eat color knot with us. I'm, eh, I'm, eh, I'm, oh, there is a newborn baby. Aludho and Biafra, so, eh, eh, you want to be up at unzo?
No, about to, eh, eh.
Yes, and, uh, while that is going on, also lay the emphasis that everything we do here is to raise money for our liberation. Um, at least all of us have seen the carnage being, 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 uh, uh, carried out in our homeland. A lot of people are dying and the glory to God. General Butuzo has made an announcement for thirteen and fourteen of February to resume defense of the land. What we are doing here is to raise fund for such liberation. So everybody should help. Whatever we do here goes to that. We are not, uh, raising money in any mandate for any welfare. It is the defense of our land.
Yes.
So everybody, let us come up and do the needful.
Uh, that, that is the essence of the prayer, uh, uh, around the A W O G and D O G, since they said, oh, yeah, with Roger, with the end, eh. And, eh, eh, tarondo, so it is for our life. We are, eh, as we are eating the color knot, we are also, eh, eh, eating for our lives. So, uh, okay, uh, what, uh, patience, Madame, patience. You are welcome. No, no, I.
Come on, eh.
They were.
Come on. They were.
They were, oh, I, eh, what I like.
I'm mute.
My patience, I'm muted.
Uh, sir, what, can you, um, can you mute the second, the second line? You're echoing. You're echoing.
Madame Patience, uh, can you open your mic so that we call, eh, the next person? Then. Um. And back to, with that reason of hand. Um, back to, with that reason of hand, uh, what's enough muscle? I don't understand, is that, uh, did you raise your hand? If it's raised up, or if it's raised enough hand, then, uh, pick the mic.
Uh, let the host unmute, uh, ma- ma- mommy patience.
Okay, hold on, and let me, uh, search for him, for her.
Is it iPhone two patients?
No, she's, uh, she's returned, eh? This iPhone?
If it's iPhone, I pass my, mic to her, she, she should be able to.
iPhone two.
Yeah, but I saw her before, but I can locate her again.
I've give her mic, I don't know why she's not.
Uh, okay. It's like she's taken out, it's like she's out. She's not on the video.
Nothing, yeah. Actually, I'm mute, I don't know why she can't mute.
Okay, any other person, please, raise, raise up your hands, come and take Goroji. If your county is not yet represented, please come and take Goroji.
Yes, I come there, actually, maybe I'm not have few the ways, eh, man? I is ten thousand nine, I Goroji.
A J?
Ten thousand A J, if I give Goroji, I will not have time, but she'll, not have few the ways, eh, man? And about ten thousand, I will give Goroji, I will do twenty thousand nine, twenty thousand A J. Uno ba, I don't have a lot of A J.
Eh, 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 me quite a lot, I got a lot of fine. Uh, uh, honorable American, uh, nde wu.
Nde wu, honorable. Cha cha cha, Alude Mama.
Yeah.
Mama nu.
Yeah.
Uh, Kelly, when you are, I greet everybody, all the honorable in the house. I greet you, uh, uh, and also, eh, my A P M, I greet you. I know your hectic work schedule does not allow you to, to be as free as you would like to, but.
Nde wu.
Then, you, 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 sir, in any case, you know, you, we, we honor you, we praise you, we, we give you, we give you, uh, uh, all, uh, all the strength you need. Uh. So, I will not be long on this, uh, with this meeting because today is the day I usually prepare for the week. But before I leave, I will like to, uh, use, uh, 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 hundred A J ma to take the Goroji. And also, I will also use a hundred A J ma to welcome our A P M.
Anakua ka ebba, anakua ka ebba. Anakua ka ebba.
Gona ka, gona ka, kuwa ka, gono metozo. That is, oh, test, uh, oh, test, uh, yeah, gono metozo.
I will, I will hang around for a little while, then, uh, if you guys can excuse me, then I'll go prepare for the week.
Nde wu.
Nde wu, okay.
You are welcome. Goroji, Goroji, eh, patunso for Moi, please, uh, stay open. We must, the color have been bro- uh, have been broken, it is the many, it must be eaten, please. Goroji, raise, raise your hand up and pick the Goroji.
Give us a little music.
Okay, so.
OJ Biafra, you have the mic, you are welcome.
I wonder, you can drop a voice note, we are on phone listen, we are, uh, meeting.
O- OJ Mike, you have the mic.
Dalo lungan.
Dalo.
Nde wu, nde wu.
Nde wu.
I be more, eh, no, eh, run, be a noodle, boy, so, nah, noodle, but I need a book, money. And I go my, yeah, I want to, one, you, Kuro, Kugoroku, where's the can, where are you? Fifty A J ma, where, what those, oh, you know, a fofa, I eat you, eh, tacha. There, where's the one, I, I P M, no, it's fifty A J ma.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, but, eh, my, to, Moi, na, eh, Moi, can I prepare, you know, na, na, na corner? Uh, uh, hacka, buga, hacka, uh, Moi, yeah, uh, Moi, you know, I'm gonna ask, you know, the book, okay? Who, who, who should come up, please? Buku ta no, dance, and the, the, oh, ba, buku te, I'm why, even in the tune. Thank you, thank you, thank you, you are welcome. So, uh, we got, can they, uh, corona, is it, uh, OJ Biafra?
Yes.
Yes.
Goroji, 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 Goroji must be eaten, please, come and represent your county, your district, your village.
Honorable Isaac, I hope the few or few, uh, reaching out to them to get contacts.
Okay, I'm even recording the, um.
Apart from Mazembe, apart from Mazembe, can, can one other Goroji?
Um, OJ Biafra.
OJ Biafra.
So, I was, I was, I think, uh, to her, to know, uh, how we get the, the money.
Okay.
Mazai, could they go there with Oji, OJ Biafra?
Uh, fifty.
Uh, hundred, hundred, total of hundred.
Hundred, hundred A J ma. Hundred A J ma.
Okay, fifty plus.
Hundred, yes.
Hundred A J ma.
Okay.
Yes.
Hundred A J ma.
Please, hands up, hands up, for the Goroji. Um, Adum Chukwue Meka, you have the mic, please?
This is, so you will need to be unmuted.
Okay, if I locate her, so, uh, Adum Chukwue Meka, uh, you have the mic, while I.
I think she is, she, she is iPhone plus P she in brackets.
Uh, yeah, okay. Uh, Adum Chukwue.
Adum Chukwue Meka, Adum Chukwue Meka.
Yes, um, searching for him, uh, Adum Chukwue Meka, okay, uh, you have the mic?
Aludo Mama nu.
Mama, vam vam vam.
Oh yeah. Oh, okay, sir, he can. And I have a question.
Mm hmm.
So I am a G forty A J. Maranzo.
Okay.
Who know no a hole um?
Eh forty A J.
Who know eh?
It's here, G forty, exactly, Maranzo.
Yes, forty A J, Maranzo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, is it forty A J man? Or forty A J?
Well. I'm I'm the difference.
Eh I'm.
You ma bo. Don't care where A J, yeah, A J ma.
Eh eh A J, A J will zoo value. A J ma will dollar value.
Oh, okay. Forty A J.
Okay, forty dollars.
Forty A J, Nigerian value. That forty A J is equivalent to forty Naira. Is it forty thousand A J or forty A J?
Yeah, forty thousand A J. Yeah, Naira.
Thank you. Forty thousand A J, thank you.
Then maybe donate. I'm donating, even I come, me po, me po.
Yes.
Fifty.
Okay.
Fifty A J. Fifty thousand A J.
Fifty thousand A J.
A J, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Taking a total of ninety thousand A J.
Ninety thousand A J.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I have my icon.
There one, there one.
There one. There one.
Thank you.
Um, O J, O J Biafra, um, Akal Kadunelu.
And what come we here?
No, no. Uh, O J Biafra. Oh.
Okay, maybe, maybe he did not bring it down.
Okay, I don't know, take it down. Cola not please, cola not, cola not.
Soft music and do.
Uh, yeah, hold on.
And don't forget, A P M is here now.
Uh, yes, uh, let us see if, uh, if there are others who want to pick cola. If they are not, maybe then we move over to the next in the agenda.
Why you no ma? Leave why, why am I?
O J, O J Awonzo, O J Awonzo is still to be taken.
Can, you can jump the music into tonight and warm the ground, warm the hall. Here's some music, here's some music to make everywhere warm up.
Yes, um, yes, yeah.
Mazur Ken.
Uh, yes, 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 sorry.
There's no hand up, so can, can still move forward.
Okay, I can see, it looks like O J Biafra wants, wants to raise a hand again.
Okay, the hand is raised again, so let's give a mic.
As we begin here, O J Biafra, any attempt to speak?
Okay, this one, but I tell you can't for.
Sorry.
Patrol.
I'm a major fifty A J ma when I see honorable, I for me, but no. But I may meet me now, oh, yeah, Luis Bemela invite. So here in the name eh, you get a billion eh, Canada. Oh, Jato noon. You have to go, so you could go my bro problem. So one fifty nine, yeah, Kita, no, get me to na Canada. I know, madam, honorable, nah, I'm not gonna make no man. I for me, but so nah, 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 fifty A J ma, nah, I say no.
Uh, yes. Well, yeah, I'm a. Ah, yeah, K A J, who, 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 India, I don't want.
That, that makes it a total of one fifty A J ma.
One fifty A J ma.
Yes. Uh, I don't want, you are welcome, thank you very much.
There were.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, um, Mazzy Chris, you have the mic. The other were O J. Chris.
Yes, I, I be happy with O J, eh, good hello, O J. If I'm true, I'll add me the five thousand A J. Eh, good, I could throw more half your word than say, but.
Yes, so.
Uh, yes, uh, uh.
Nice one, nice one, nice one.
Okay, uh, hold on, come on, oh, yeah, that's really good, then I got a half your word dance. So while we are waiting for, and we see those for, you were O J, let us see. Cola not, cola not, cola not have to be eaten, please.
Cast stick with the music while we wait for people to reach us.
I have to, I have to search for it, please. In my, oh, I be a, oh, I be a.
Oh, but then I can't go make shagal.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting it, so.
Expect more coming or. Maybe playing a particular song while waiting for it. Say that, say I will not be cold.
That to half your word dance. Eh, but I do, eh, but I do, who know my body was up?
So, um, there's, uh, O J, O J is still out to be taken.
I'm a lot there, they come.
Yeah, but, yeah, but.
Who know Biafra, J, uh?
Oh, yeah, J, oh, yeah, J. I will, I know. I'm a lot there. They come.
So while this goes on, we will be, uh, preparing for the next in the, uh, agenda, please. And if you have not taken cola, please. Expect that you eat the cola with us today. Oh, I mean, I like. Oh, yeah, there are good mother, what, J, uh, I tell them.
Nah, my give me top bar, oh.
I'm a way about, about, I'm a way behind you, oh.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm.
They come.
I'm a part of it, come.
You are still equal and not. Are you so far, why?
Yeah, I do.
So, um, S, uh, um, you can also decide, uh, what do we do? Do we move over to the next, uh, agenda?
Yes, yes, um, any, anybody that comes, uh, anytime to pay for that.
Yes, uh, anybody that still want to eat cola.
So now, I think we should move on to the next, uh, we don't have all the time on edge. Now move on to the next agenda, which is, um, A P M address.
Before A P M address, there is no inauguration, uh, talent, you know.
Well, I think he stand, he stood that down, um, I don't know when he's, uh, bringing that up again. Um, I don't know the, so, I think that was.
He still be done that. Yeah, because it was not, um, uh, valuable to do that. So can we add something to that?
Uh, Mazur, okay, can you confirm that? Can you confirm the, uh, state executive inauguration can take place now?
Uh, let's, uh, uh, Honorable Moby. Uh, Honorable Moby, C O S, are you within reach, please?
Uh. Uh, ma, uh, Mazur, Honorable K, uh. Honorable K.
Uh, A P, A P M.
Okay, uh, okay, are the names already been called?
Uh, yes, the, the names have been, uh, introduced. I think, uh, I done, uh, three of them, the three, uh, hot, uh, okay, um. Honorable S A, how do you want to, you want to, uh, call up your executives or you, uh, take the oath for them?
No, you don't have to call the names, you know, well, they are in homeland, so. I think we already know who the, uh, they admin. So, uh, so, uh, my honorable. A maker of why.
Your A P M, sir.
Right, okay. So, um. You are the, uh, the mayor of, uh, of the Aludo. And I believe, uh. You already called the name of the executives. And so what we need to do now is to make sure that, uh. The people of Aludo, the citizens of Aludo. Uh, in agreement with it. So, uh, please, it's citizens of Aludo here.
Yes.
Okay, so please, citizens of Aludo, uh, in this gathering with us. Please, if you are in agreement with, uh. Mazzy Emeka O'Wai as the admin and the executives. Can you all please, uh, raise your hands? Uh, if you don't know, I don't, Mazzy, uh, Honorable K. Think you might need to have. The, I can, your hand here.
Yeah, so please, uh, if you are from Aludo here, uh, just raise your hand if you are in support of, uh, the present executives. Uh, Honorable Emeka O'Wai as the state administrator. Uh, he's a deputy, Honorable Isaac Otta, and the secretary, uh, Honorable, uh, S U Y Jesus. These are the three, uh, hot, uh, uh, names to be reckoned with. And the rest, I think you all know them, or have had, uh, have the names, uh, called. So please raise your hands up, uh, in support, to, for them to be inaugurated, to be sworn in, so that, uh. Uh, raise your hand, please. Go to, uh, reaction. If you don't know how to raise a hand, if you click reaction, uh, your, uh, gadget, you see, uh, raise hand. You just click on it. And your hand will be, uh, raised. Uh, if you don't know how to raise your hand, please indicate by waving, so that we count you. So, let me see. Uh, actually, I think, eh, eh, okay, oh. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Eleven, eleven, eleven. In the Aludo, please, uh, raise your hand in support of the, uh, swearing in of the S A and his executives.
Oh, we're only Aludo, never, I'm ready how to raise that. Oh, we're only Aludo, no, I'm, nah, I'm ready how to raise that. Can you unmute yourself and speak?
We can just, um, we can just say who is against you, the person against you should just raise on. And let all, every other person, um, put on their hands. Because it's like some people from, raise their hands.
And that is even, uh, to get their reaction to the question. Uh.
I think you have, you have thirteen names with hands up, is on the screen. It's on the screen.
Uh, ten, uh, and yes, it's not raised, and, uh, you must also count yourself on there.
Oh, oh, great, I can, I can, I can vote for myself now.
Yes, you can, yeah. Contestants have the right to vote for themselves as well. So, um, A P M, I think, uh, since there is no objection, uh, will, uh, uh, accept it that everybody here, uh, accept the, the motion. But because if there is an, uh, objection, somebody, uh, who have raised an objection or raised a motion, so. Uh, I don't know. Uh, we have, uh, uh, fourteen hands raised. Yeah, out of, uh, the number here, I think the, uh, the rest are our visitors and the cabinet members.
Okay, uh, thank you, Honorable K, and just as you stated. We believe, uh, the rest are Biafrans that are visiting and just want to be part of what we are doing today. So, uh, today, Honorable Emeka O'Wai and, uh, you and your executive. You are all welcome to serve in the capacity of making sure that, uh. The people of Aludo are well governed under the. Biafra Republic government de facto in homeland. And, uh. We well understand that before this process, you and the Minister of Interior, uh, you all have gone through the process. So this is just to let the public know that as of today. You and your cabinet have resumed fully to serve, uh, the people of Biafra. And we believe that you and your cabinet will serve with the best of your knowledge. Just like, uh. Just like. Uh, just like, uh, you already, uh, be, be, be told, uh, you already acquainted with. So you know the rules and regulation of the duties that you need to carry. And thank you all, and thank you for accepting this, uh, position. We all know that is not easy. Remember, it's never gonna be easy. And I believe that you are prepared to carry this load. It's not easy, it's not a joke. We all know that we are in a freedom fighting. We are working hard to liberate ourselves. Of which we already re-declared our nation. So give the best all that you can, you and your executive. And remember the promise, Biafra first. So when they throw the bullet on you. Make sure you fight back, make sure you give your best. Because we have a lot of enemy, when I say when they throw the bullet, I'm not talking about gun bullet. I mean our enemies. I mean, they will come in different form. They will try to bring you down, they will cajole you, they will slander your name. They will do all kinds, whatever they can, to just make sure you're not able to govern. You are not the first, it have happened to a lot of other leaders that have traded this part as well. But the question is that how ready are you? Be prepared and, uh, know what you have signed in for. Congratulations, you and your, uh, executive. You are welcome, and I believe that the people of Aludo. Will be happy to, uh, to have you. I have spoke one on one with you on the phone as well. So I know how tough you are, and I believe. You will carry this, uh, your, this duty with best of your knowledge, you and your executive. Congratulations, thank you. There were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Right, thank you.
So, um, S A, uh, then, uh, you have something to tell us?
Yes, I am, I have prepared a short acceptance speech. Um, I will just read it through quickly. And then I move on to welcome the A P M to this August visit. Uh, I will read out my spe- acceptance speech. Read by Administrator Maz, uh, the State Administrator Mazzy Emeka U. Your Excellency, the acting Prime Minister of the Biafra Republic Government in exile. Honorable Ogechukwu Nkere. My fellow Aludo citizens. All Brigi cabinet members here present the media team and distinguished guests. I stand before you today with a heart full of gratitude and humility. Deeply honored to accept the immense responsibility that has been entrusted to me as Aludo sole administrator. This is not just a victory for me, but a victory for all of us. An affirmation of our shared hopes, dreams and value. Before I proceed, I want to extend my deepest thanks to the people of Brigi Aludo. It is your fearless voices that have carried us this far. Your trust and your belief in the future of our dear nation as espoused by our leaders. Mazzy Nandekano and our Prime Minister Mazzy Simon Ekman Joko. I promise to serve each and every one of us, regardless of where we live, and I will always stand by the truth. My prayer is to God. To always help us or help me to identify the truth at all time, that we may follow it. Now, as I stand here, I am reminded that this moment is not the culmination of a journey. But the beginning of a new chapter. We face challenges, some old, some new, that require our collective will. And determination to overcome. But I am confident that with the strength, resilience and collect, uh, creativity of our people in Brigi Aludo. We can meet these challenges head on and create solution that will serve everyone. I pledge to administer the state with integrity, transparency. And a deep sense of responsibility to the public trust. I will work tirelessly to foster opportunity for Aludo to do whatever she can. In making sure our land is fully liberated from the zoo occupational forces. Beginning from Abam County through Aruchuku. On half year, Abreba, Goro, Itemi, Bere, Imeni, Ukuisi. Isuochi, Nato, Ugudisu, Uturu. Umu Imeni, Umu Chese, and Omona Counties. But none of this can be accomplished without unity, so we crave for unity. Our greatest strength as a nation or as a state lies in our difference, differences. But in our ability to come together as one. Today I ask for your partnership. Together, let us build a future that is defined not by division. But by our shared commitment to progress, fairness, justice for all. As we embark on this new journey, I commit myself to this office to walk ahead. And to, to walk ahead and to each and every one of us. The road will be, uh, always, will not always be easy, like the A P M said. But I believe in the power of our collective will. We are a people who have always faced adversity with courage and emerge stronger. Together, we will continue that tra- uh, tradition. I thank you all for placing your trust in me, and I am ready to get to work. May God bless you all, and may God bless Aludo, Brigi. Thank you.
Yeah.
Nice one, nice one, nice one.
And there were.
Uh, welcome, welcome, Excellency.
Hello.
Thank you, you are welcome, congratulations to you and your executive.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, please, everybody should, um, uh, take down your hands, except you are for cola, uh, taking, except you want to, uh, take cola. Please, uh, let's take our hands down. Please, hands down.
I can't deal, no, no.
Okay, okay, uh, go on, nah, mark.
Because I'm, I want to make smaller donation here for. For some people.
Uh, is it donation or?
Eh, eh, Waji, eh, Waji, eh, Waji.
Is it, okay, oh, Waji, okay, go on.
Waji. Yeah, they were for, one of that units from Canada, ten thousand Naira, ten thousand A J. It was for Mazzy Onoka, Omenka, ten thousand A J. One is from, uh, Goro County. The other one from, uh. Umu Imeni County. That is twenty thousand A J. I'll come back the donation, thank you.
Okay, you are always welcome. You, you, but again, I, 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 you don't need to go out and come back, you, you can stay, stay behind, since you are. You're always bringing something.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Atta, go on. Uh, you have your hand up, or you, you want to take it down, okay, go on. Atta, is it an old hand up, or you just raised it now?
Okay, sorry, it was actually, uh, one years eh, of S A, uh, uh, or the state S A. That's, um. I wanted to make a donation on behalf of, uh, Neto had given out, um, since we started. So he said, okay, I can help him to, um, to collect cola, not on behalf of the, um, or the, uh, or the state. So they are donating, uh, ten thousand A J. Thank you very much. Uh, maybe when he was able to come in a conceal, but if he's, if the nature do not allow him, then, uh, this will cover it. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Hello? Okay, yeah, uh, okay, let me, let me, uh, let's search for you. Um, uh, who is Experience? Experience?
Okay, thank you so much.
Es- Es- Experience, you have the mic.
Okay, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, uh. Good evening, everybody in this, uh, a greater question. This is a good guy that speaking to. Yeah. Um.
You say this is you?
This is a good guy.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, um, I want to sincerely congratulate, uh, comrade, uh, Emeka O'Wai for your new elected, uh. Uh, admin of Aludo. I'm so much happy to be in the midst of you people for the experience that you have had with you people. I think, um, what I'm observing here is the key player of, uh, Aludu is here. Because I know when
Yes.
Aludu have problem, I will be able to appear in the meeting with P M. And we address it. Since that the Aludu change, and the people that make that Aludu to change is the people that in this, uh, in this place as executive.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just want to, I just want to congratulate you people. And to know that, um, the journey is not easy, as A P M have always said. But we must know that, um, it's a tax that we must. And, um, we all must there. Uh, other states have been doing their best. Uh, other states have been doing their best. Of, uh, Kiwe, uh, Odomegu, Ikemba, other states is a state that, um, the key players is playing well. Despite the noise makers that, um, all those peoples are making over there. But them understand it, so I want to sincerely thanks Aludu that you people should also do as you have been doing before. People have been making Aludu proud, and I know that you people will also do it.
Yeah, but I've, I've unmuted, yes, I've unmuted you.
Please, Mazie, okay, please, when, uh, when you want to speak, try mute yourself. Uh, Experience, can you go ahead, please? The good guy, can you go ahead and mute yourself?
Okay, so, okay, thank you so much, my A P M, uh, thank you so much. So, as I was saying that, um, we should know that this work is not all about noise making. And, um, just as A P M said earlier, that, uh, is not, uh, is not allowed to call the name of people out. Um, preventures, uh, this thing have happened, but we know that God is our side, that nothing will happen, but it's due to work with intelligent sense to know that we are still playing the ball. And by God's grace, we have scored many goals, and by God's grace, um, at the end of everything's, we are going to announce the results. And the results we announce is the day that we start congratulating us. And what we need is not all about our paper, speaking in big grammar, it's all about money. Money needed. And that is why you will see some of them when they call, this, uh, criminal, when they come in their phone raising, they will raise their hands. Even those that is not within, some of them will raise hand two times. And you think that they are, they are having followers. But all those things you observe it, but it's not the time of talk, talk, it's all, it's the time of you bringing what you have. That potential that you have bring it out, and that potential is to bring your money. So I encourage Aludu to do the needful as you have been doing it. And also work with also with your experience that you have been using to do that work also to do. So other states that are visiting this, uh, Aludu, you may not have a privilege of inviting P M to, to your state as inaugurates. Our P M's, uh, A P M have other works to do, but you need to know that you have confirmed as a state admin, as long as you have contacted the people that you directed you to contact. The only, the only people that will not allow is when somebody just wake up and begin to campaign that is admin without approval of A P M. It cannot be done. So you can go to Ungosi or that woman do their own, uh, in the sense that you see how she's doing their nonsense, but as long as you are seeing the attack of A P M's and attack of our P M's, you must work according to the instruction. It just as what P M said during the time we visited Aludu. He said, if you do everything, make sure that you reach federal. That is what P M always says whenever I have meeting with any states. Everything you do, make sure that you reach federal or giving accounts or anything you are doing. So anybody that doing it, eh, after everything, report to A P M's, when once you report to A P M, A P M is the federal. And that is what I just want to pass. Other states that are here, that anything you are doing without approval of A P M's, be knowing that you have not been confirmed as a state admins. And I'm for a much happy other states who have reached him. May God bless all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Honorable Bishop, uh, you can now go on. Bishop, unmute yourself, please. Uh, go on. Bishop Comforts.
Yeah, not, my picture is not showing enough, I keep trying.
Okay, picture, uh, uh, one, 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 please, can you open a Bishop picture, uh, camera?
Yeah, today on this platform to have our meeting, let's open.
I, I don't think. Okay, unmute, Bishop Comforts. Oh, okay. Bishop, go ahead.
Yeah, I have, I have, I do my donation later.
Hello, Honorable, okay?
As Mazie, okay, um.
So, um, I didn't know, I was just speaking, not knowing that I was muted. So, uh, thank you. I was saying that in the absence of a further, uh, break, uh, eating of cola, we will move over to the next in the agenda, and that will be uh, inviting the A P M for his, uh, state operation address to Aludu people. Uh, so. So, uh, because, uh, uh, A P M is Nukumau, we will use something special to welcome him in to address us today, so, uh, hold on. So while, while the A P M get ready for, to address us, let us welcome him, because this is a maiden Aludu, Aludu people invited in, and he answered to us, so we are welcoming him the way we welcome our special guest. Everywhere in Aludu. So you can still be picking up cola, please, when the music goes down, then A P M will address us. Okay, uh, A P M, um.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Honorable. Okay. And thank you, uh, the honorable ministers of Brigi and the de facto government in the homeland. Thanks all the reps, admin, both coordinator. Thank you, all fellow Biafrans. Special thank you to Aludu State of Biafra Land. Thanks to the newly admin of Aludu State, Honorable Emeka Opa and the executives. Thank you all, Biafrans, especially Aludu, because today we are at Aludu. Thanks all meaningful Aludu that knows the name, the meaning of Aludu and what it applies. Aludu based on my understanding mean land of peace. Before I continue, I want all of us to remember our leader Mazie Nndikano and what he's been fighting for. Why he is where he is today is because he love peace. Is because he want us to be peaceful. Is because he want us to have a country that is Aludu, a land of peace. Is because he know what peace signify. When you have peace of mind, I bet you, you will live longer and be happy. Our leader, Odomegu Juku as well. At the time, he fought to make sure that we have Aludu, to make sure that we have peace, to make sure that we live in our land peacefully. You can only live in your land peacefully when you don't have enemies, when you don't have terrorists, when you don't have those that want to annihilate you, kill you and take over your land. Our leader Philip Ephion likewise the same. He fought for Aludu. He fought for peace to be in our land, for us to have our own territory, which we already have, but we just have to make sure we keep the peace to chase our enemies out. Likewise, our prime minister, which the Finland Authority called for question. What is he fighting for? He's fighting for peace and security of his people. He's fighting for Aludu. He's fighting so we all can have Aludu. That's why today we are at Aludu to remind the people of Aludu what Aludu means. Aludu means land of peace. Which we all are hungry of. Wish we all desire. We all want peace. If you're in a home that is full of chaos, I don't know how you will stay in that home. Just like a man who have problem at his home. Whenever he get off from work, he don't want to return home. Because the home is full of problem, chaos and misunderstanding. He always want to hang around somewhere. Or some might turn to be drunker, get drunk so that once they get home, they don't even know when, they will just fall asleep. Because that home don't have Aludu. Because that home don't have peace. Today we are at Aludu. We want to remind the people of Aludu what Aludu really mean. Are we enjoying the Aludu today? The answer is no. Are we really having the peace today in Aludu State of Biafa Land? The answer is no. So people of Aludu, what do we need to do? So we can enjoy our Aludu. So we can enjoy the peace that we all have been hungry for. We need to work hard and do what is right. People of Aludu, I believe we all know the problem that is facing us. I believe we all have been victim of the Nigerian state. The Nigerian terrorists, they don't want us to have Aludu. They don't want us to have peace. That's why they invade our territory. They rape our women. They slaughter our children. They deprive us of our peace. People of Aludu, the question now is that what do we need to do? So we can maintain that peace and security that we be yearning for, that we desire as a people. I believe over eighty percent of us know what we need to do. It's time that we need to fight and make sure we restore Aludu. And make sure we restore peace in our land. And who are we fighting? And who is preventing us from this peace? In Nigerian terrorist state. People of Aludu, I have a question for you. If you recall, I believe your grand-grandfather, grand-grandmother did not taught you or tell you they are Nigerians. No. Our four forefathers are not Nigerian. We are Biafrans. So now we know what the problem is. We have people that occupied our land. We have people that want us to be the same country. The question is that, is it going to work? That experiment have been done and it never work. Rather, it worsened every day by day. It worsened every day by day for over fifty years. When we've, when the Nigerian state brought war upon us, when we find out that this union not going to work. When we find out that this union not going to work, our leader Odumewo Jukun, as the Nigerian state, let the north be the north, let the southeast be the southeast. Let we all go our separate ways peacefully without shedding blood, without harming anyone. And the Nigerian terrorist state in Aboria Kaor had in Ghana, they at the time agree to this agreement. A terrorist state will always remain a terrorist state. And what happened in, when they get back from Ghana, the terrorists always the terrorists. They turn around and do what? And brought the war of genocide upon the Biafran people. Till today, we are still fighting to totally restore Aludu. We are still fighting to make sure we still have peace in our land. And only how we can restore this Aludu that is full of peace is to make sure we support our defense that are making, that have sacrificed to make sure they defend the people of Biafra. And how are we going to do that? We all know that if you wanna go out and hunt, you don't hunt with your bare hands. You need the logistics. You need what we prepare you and help you to be able to go to battle and fight your enemy. People of Aludu, it's time that we all we stand up. Stand up for our rights, for what we believe, for who we are. We are peaceful people. We are God fearing people. It's time we restore Aludu back to our land. It's time we restore normalcy to Aludu as people of peace that is endorsed by God. Because our God, our Creator is a loving God, a peaceful God. We need that peace in our home so we can happily be happy in our state, in our Biafra land. We need total freedom from our enemy. That is only how we can restore peace of Aludu. What we are experiencing in the hand of the Nigerian terrorist country with her jihadist machinaries is beyond our imagination. It's time that we all rise up so we can protect that Aludu. So we can protect the peace. And we people of Aludu, we know what to do. We people of Aludu, we know what it takes to have freedom. People of Aludu, the Nigerian terrorist state, they have invaded us. They have robbed us. They have come to destroy and annihilate us. They have come to chase us out of our land. They have broken our house. Those still what belong to us to chase us out of our house, out of our homes. If a criminal invade your territory, if a criminal broke in your door to steal, rob you, what do you do? People of Aludu, you know what to do. If someone break in your door, trying to rob you middle of the night, in the daylight, in the morning, in the evening, trying to rob you still what belong to you in your house, what do you do? Do you fold your hands and wash this rob, arm robbery? Do you fold your hand and wash them still what belong to you? And you will just be smiling, clapping hand, thanking them for what they are doing. What do you do? That is exactly what is going on now. How long are we going to keep washing them, robbing us, stealing us, stealing from us? So what do you do? When someone, somebody come to rob you, steal from you, you know what to do. And in a situation whereby you pick up your phone, you call for emergency help, you dial nine one one, you call the police for rescue. Before they get to you, what do you do? Will you be washing these criminals, robbing you, raping your wife, your children? I don't think so. Do you supposed to fold your hand and be washing? And say, oh, I already call for help. That the law enforcement or the police, they on their way to help you. Do you fold your hand and wash? Why they are massacring your children? Why they are stealing your belonging? Why they are burning your house, your property? If you just fold your hand and wash, that make you a coward. But I don't think that people of Aludu will fold your hand and wash these criminals invaded their property and wash these criminals coming their home, steal from them, rape their children, kill everyone. I don't think people of Aludu will do that. In a situation like this, what do you do? Before the police or before the law enforcement that you call for help get to you, you will initiate the fight, you fight back. You pick up anything, whatever that you can to defend yourself. Self-defense is not a crime. You have the right to defend yourself. But the government of Biafra in the homeland and in diaspora will not give you a license of how to do it. Self-defense is imbued. You know how to defend yourself. You know how, where to land your ponches. And in a situation where the government have those that are protecting the, our land to make things easier, to make it faster and easier so that these robbers, these terrorists, they don't knock at your door. They don't get too close to you. They need your support. Make the job easier for you so that those that are protecting the land, we do the fighting. So that our angels that are protecting Biafra land, we do the fighting for us. Let's make it easier so that the burden won't be too much. So the fight that is going out will not result to be inside your door, inside your household. Let's prevent this fight from coming in our doorstep. Because if you don't support the angels that are protecting our land, that fight will get to your door. And when the fight get to your door, you will find it difficult to defend yourself. Before the fight get to your door, it can be prevented. Support the cause of our freedom. Support anyhow you know you can support. And we know what the angels that are guiding our land, the angels that are protecting us. We know what we have been doing to support them. We know how people of Aludu have been empowering them, continue supporting them. So this fight won't end up in your doorstep. Don't let these terrorists bring the fight to your house, to your household. At that time, it will be very, very difficult for you to defend yourself. Before the fight get to your doorstep, it can be prevented. That's why we have our angels that are protecting us. Let them protect your household from miles away from your doorstep. Let them protect your farm from miles away before they get to your farm. Let us protect the whole Aludu. If you don't support, if you don't support for them to be able to protect, that means you invite the fight to your doorstep. Because when the terrorist army of the Nigerian state, when they come and if there's no, nothing to stop them, they are coming directly to your doorstep. We have seen in many cases, we are the terrorist state of Nigeria with jihadist machinaries. Where they burn innocent civilians' houses. When they open fire on civilians' doorstep and when they are shooting, they shoot whatever that walk past that window. That is exactly what we are trying to protect. We don't wanna open the window or open the door for them to be able to get close to Aludu people. We need your support, we need your cooperation. Please support our angels that are protecting the land. You know what to do so that the burden will be too much on you. Our leader Mazinam Di Kanu was saying, they are coming, the terrorists are coming. The Hausa Fula Ni, the Nigerian jihadists, they are coming. That they are coming to invade our land, they are coming to kill us. That they are coming to chase us from our own land, our land of Aludu. That they are coming because our land is a peaceful place and terrorist people, they don't love where it's peaceful. They love it when it's chaos. They love what we don't like. We don't live the same lifestyle. We don't worship the same God like they do. We don't eat the same food. We don't have the same ideology. We are Aludu peaceful people. We are people that emulate, imitate our God of peace. Our God is not God that supports those that rape. Our God is not God that support terrorists. Our God is not a God that support the invaders, which we are not. Please people of Aludu, if you have not been supporting our liberation, kindly do that. Because at the end, so we all can be joyful and live in our Aludu, in our land of peace, in our land that God have given us. And the enemy, the terrorist state of Nigeria, they trying to take this peace from us. They trying to take the land, the peaceful land, the Aludu from us. And we will not let that happen.
Yes.
We will not let that happen. We must maintain our Aludu. We must maintain our land of peace. If we all recall about two and a half years ago, our leader Mazinam Di Kanu, that is still in the hand of our enemy, the Nigerian state, they kidnapped him from Kenya against his will, against mankind will. They violate all rules and norm. In the court of our precious, Abuja, our leader Mazinam Di Kanu said, there must be peace in Aludu, there must be peace in Biafra land. How will you have peace? When you have the terrorist state, the jihadists, the Boko Haram, the ISIS in Aludu? We must chase them out of our land. We must liberate Biafra. All Biafran territory, all forty states of territory must be Aludu, must be protected. All forty states of Biafra must be peaceful. Our leader Mazinam Di Kanu uttered this word over two years ago. There must be peace in Biafra land. There must be Aludu in Biafra land.
Yes.
There must be peace in all forty states of Biafra.
Yes.
And how are we maintaining this peace? How will you have Aludu when you have sabotage everywhere? How will you have Aludu when you have all these illegitimate governors, senators parading themselves in Aludu? Biafra is already redyclared. And any presence of the Nigerian state is illegitimate. We need to wake up. And I believe Honorable Emeka Opa would do the needful with his executive in making sure that there is peace in Aludu, in making sure. In making sure that Aludu people. Know what peace is all about. In making sure that Aludu people wake up. Wake up before these terrorists get to your doorstep. Support the angels. Support our men that are guiding Aludu. Support the men that are fighting to protect Biafra land. So that this fight will not get to your doorstep. Because if you don't do that, when this fight gets to your doorstep. You will be the one doing the fighting. If you don't do that, when these terrorists get to your doorstep. And we all know the situation of the country where we are. That when you call for help, when you die 911, there might not be help. In a situation like that, what do you do? You will be left alone to deal with it. So we need to prevent that from happening. Because we have a lot of our citizens in Aludu and Biafrans at large. That might not be able to defend themselves. We have some disability ones, we have some weak ones, we have some older ones. We have those that are vulnerable, that they can't defend themselves. For that reason, we need to support our angels. That are going to carry out this duty of defending the land of Biafra. We need to support these angels that are going to defend Aludu. If you don't support them. Then. If you don't support them, this fight, this war that the Nigerian state. Have brought upon us will not be on our doorstep. We need to prevent that from happening. And we have seen many cases whereby. The terrorists, we've been knocking at Biafran's innocent civilians' door. And when you open the door, the next thing they start shooting, start killing. That's why we need to support our liberation. That's why we need to support those that are fighting to protect the land. If you are in Biafra land, if you are in Aludu, you are not supporting. Ask yourself question. Are you better off now? Are you better off in the situation of what is happening in Biafra land? Do you like it the way it is? Do you like what is happening in our land? Is your life better? The current situation we are now. Do that help you? Do that help you in having a sewage system? Do that help you in having a steady life? Do that help you in having a running water in your house? Do that help you in security wise? The current situation, do that help you economically? Is your life better off now? The answer is no. That's why we must protect Aludu, that's why we must protect Biafra land. So we can get a better life. So we can live in a country that is free from corruption. Free from terrorism, free from all these jihadis. So we can live in a country where we can worship our god. If you are Biafran and you are washing. Ask yourself question. Why are you not supporting our angels? Why are you not supporting? Those that are fighting for us to safeguard us from the hand of our enemy? Why are you not supporting? Don't you love freedom? Don't you love Aludu? Don't you want to live in a land of peace? Do you love to live in a chaos country like Nigeria? The answer is no. That's why over fifty million Biafrans have voted. To exit from a terrorist country called Nigeria. And we re-declare. Biafra in Latin Finland December the second. And five hundred and seventeen delegates cast their vote. What do that tells you? The answer is that. We don't want to be part of a terrorist country, a jihadis country. A country where Boko Haram leader is the vice president. A country where the president is a drug lord that is so corrupt. A president that was indicted in Chicago, Bolah Ahmed Tunubu. We are not Nigerians. And will never be part of Nigeria. People of Aludu, to maintain this statute quote. As our name implies, Allah Udo, land of peace. Our leader Mazin Namdekanu made it clear. Aludu must be peaceful. Biafra land must be peaceful. We can see the killing going on in Biafra land today. The killing of the jihadis, the killing of the terrorist country called Nigeria. We can see those that they are working with. The illegitimate governors of the southeast from Saludo and others. How they are working with the Nigerian terrorist state to kill our people. Because these people don't want peace. Because these people call the so-called former senators. And the governors, they don't want Aludu, they don't want peace. Because they have aligned themselves with the devil. They have died and ate with the devil. They are not peaceful people. Biafrans, wake up, you know what to do. If they don't want us to live in our land peacefully. They don't deserve to be in our land. If they don't want to be in Aludu, all you all know what to do. Send them out. They need to go where they belong. If they believe in the Nigerian state. I don't need to tell you what to do. Aludu people, Biafran people, you all know what to do. These people that have brought evil in our land, what are they still doing in our land? Do they have business in Aludu? Do they supposed to be in our land? If you are washing me today and you are listening, hold your hand in your ear. I'm asking you a question. Can you hear them in a line? What are they doing in our land? I'm not telling you what to do. You know what to do. You know those that are killing you. You know the ones that brought them to our land and they are boasting about it. Biafrans, it's time we all man up. We know what is right and wrong. If someone comes to kill you, before that person kill you or get to you, what do you do? I'm not telling you what to do, you know what to do. If you don't know what to do, if you don't have the capacity or the capability. Ask question, what do I do in a situation like this? I believe you have those that surround you, that we advise you as well. And for those that know, we have those that are fighting for us, our angels. And you can't fight. And you don't have the ability. You know what to do. You employ them, they work for you. They will work for the people of Aludu. That is the fact. Give them what they need to get the job done. Give them what they need to clean our land, to chase our enemy out of our land. We are not asking you to go and do what you can't do. We are not giving you a burden that you cannot carry. Our fingers are not equal. Eke ro eke.
Yes.
You can employ someone for work for, to work for is not a crime. We are not asking you to go and start buying what you can't handle or what you not trained. To do. We are not asking the civilians to arm themselves. The Biafran Republic government in exile and the homeland. We are not asking the innocent civilians to arm themselves. If you are not trained to arm yourself, don't arm yourself. Don't put your life in danger, let the professionals do it. But the question is that, are we in support? Are we in support? In funding our liberation? Yes. We are in support in funding our liberation.
Yes.
Then, why can't you fund your liberation? Why can't you fund your freedom? Ayana Asigi Burewe. Ayana Asigi Gatin Dugi Nansubu. Oh, when the Abu Arroha. Let them do the job. Wadoha. Niha niha geji me. When you are there crying, complaining, they are here killing us. The terrorists have come, the Nigerian state have come. The question is that, when they come, how are you prepared? How are you prepared? Are you part of? Who that is taking care of the liberation? Are you supporting our liberation? Are you supporting our angels? Because they the one fighting for us. The Biafran Republic government in exile and the homeland de facto government. We are not, as of this time. Asking the Biafran citizens to go and carry gun to defend themselves. We are not endorsing that. But we do endorse self-defense. Self-defense is individual right. Self-defense, I repeat, is individual right. You have the right to defend yourself. You have the right to defend yourself in any capacity that you can. But supporting your liberation is not a crime. Eh, Marahige me, eh, support ndina Alruhan yobu ime. Asna neji bu awa yo nocha. So you know what is right, do what is right. We have been killed a lot and we'll do everything we can. To protect our land. Because there must be Aludu. Because there must be peace in the land. And for those that are sabotaging our freedom. We believe in short period of time, they will turn around. And realize the mistake and the damage they have done. We pray that that will happen as quick as possible. So that all Biafrans, we join hands together and fight this great fight of our freedom. And fight this great fight of Aludu, of us having peace in the land. Thank you, people of Aludu. I believe when our prime minister is out, he will be proud of all of us. We are doing everything we can to make sure that our land is not overrun by the terrorist state of Nigeria. Because that is the main objective, the main reason why he was called for questioning. Of which, in due time, we will address our enemies. Both the wife of our former leader, Odumide Ujuku. We have a lot of Jersey bells like Bianca. And that Ujuku, who will remove Ujuku and address Bianca with her real evil name. People like Bianca, the land of Biafra will reject her. People like Bianca, she should be ashamed of herself to call herself a Biafran. Of which, I don't believe she is, she might be one of these Fulanis. One of those. That somehow the real father might be a jihadis or a Fulan. We to to honor check. All these saboters, Allah Biafraga tunos. Mandes na hana ke. Halile, halile, Biafrans. Agama wuno yuno game, uno ma yuno game. Uno ma yelile ebbe yelile nemeka, o Aludu hapu edina Biafran. You know what to do, ndewo, thank you.
There were.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, Honorable EPM. Thank you. Thank you for that intimate, intimate words and advice and.
There were our APM. Bless you, sir.
Thank you, sir, you are welcome, you are welcome. Uh, and Aludu, no, 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 um, Honorable S. Um, may I call you up briefly if you are. If you have a few words to tell him so that we move over to the next agenda, which is to welcome our APM properly. Uh, the way uh, we had planned. Just a few words and then you give the mandate and they will.
Mazie. Honorable, okay?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
May I be, may I be excused? APM, may I be excused, please?
Oh, oh, okay.
Yes, okay, right. Thank you.
Your Excellency. The Acting Prime Minister, Honorable Logan Kere. I can only say thank you. Well, overwhelmed by the level and depth of the speech you have given to us. We won't tell you we are not aware of what is going on. But you have presented what is going on to all with such a passion. that has made us to think twice. I will say on myself and on behalf of the Aludu Esu and Aludu people, we give you our unalied support. We will do whatever we can to ensure that the liberation of our land continues unabated. Want to assure you that to the best of our knowledge, we will support. All of us will do anything possible that we can do to make sure that the liberation of Aludu continues. Um, there's not much to say other than to say thank you. Thank you and thank you. May God strengthen you and give you protection and energy to carry on with this job. May Lord, may the good Lord help our PM to come out. May the good Lord grant mercy to our Oyendu Mazinamde Kalu. As he approaches the court tomorrow, we don't know why they were summoned, summoned. But I pray God will help us all and we will smile. I say all this in the name of Chukwue Kikabiama. He say.
Yes, sir.
He say. Sure, sure.
So Mazo, Mazo Ke, what's the next on our agenda?
Uh, yes, the to welcome uh APM properly. Um, I'll, okay, um, you just gave the mandate or I cannot swear that I see telling the Aludu why, why we are here?
Okay, I had prepared a welcome address for the APM. Um, I think I should just read it out. We prepared this, it's coming a bit late. But let me go ahead and go through it. A welcome address of the Aludu State Administrator, Mazio Paei, to His Excellency, the Acting Prime Minister. His Excellency, the Acting Prime Minister of the Biafra Republic Government in Exile, Honorable Logan Kere. All other protocol observed. I want to start by expressing my gratitude to each and every one of you for taking the time to attend the Eastern Hall Meeting. Aludu is a brand new state in terms of our executive and administration as a result of the unforeseen madness and arrogance that was displayed by the then Chief of Staff of our beloved Prime Minister Simon Epa during the last Biafra Sovereignty Restoration Convention at Lati, Finland, between November twenty nine and December third, twenty twenty four. The state was thrown into a turmoil by the action of the then uh sole administrator of the then Aludu State, who called for emergency meeting and compelled members of the cabinet to take a stand. It is either you are with Ogen Kere or you are with, in quote, the way they presented it, or you are with the government headed by the Chief of Staff. Every effort, let me just expansion a little here, every effort we made to let them know that Chief of Staff is personal assistant and not member of the cabinet and cannot deserve government and cannot form government, all fell to death here. They compelled us and we were bold, a few of us were bold to tell them she was right and we were aligning with Ogen Kere. And we were all thrown away. We didn't bother and we came together. Unfortunately for some of us, more than ninety percent of Aludu members were taken over by the S and the Secretary. All for our force and other executives took our stand based on the Biafran charter, which was adopted and passed into law in Helsinki, Finland in October. We, the Aludu Four, decided to form, to come together and kickstart a new government under the APM and decided to forge ahead with that. My APM, once again, you are very welcome to our beloved Aludu State. The land of peace guaranteed by war. We are courageous people. We are very courageous to enjoy our peace. We are already ready. We are almost all the time ready to fight the war to guarantee that peace. The land of peace and war and full of culture, which we are not going to sacrifice for any Fulani barbaric lifestyle. Our commitment to the full liberation of our dear nation is therefore wavering. In order to ensure our safety and security in the state, I want to plead with you, the APM, to kindly establish an appropriate intelligent escalation channel for us to direct intelligence to the right quarters for appropriate action. Um, this initiative is just one of the many steps that will be taken to improve our state emergency response system. We are committed to working tirelessly to ensure that our state remains safe and prosperous for all of us. We need a system where we send an intelligence gathered at the grassroots from the, um, fro- from the county and district level and we get a response within twenty four hours or less than twenty four hour. That will help us in making decision. Before I conclude, your Excellency, I want to appeal to you to direct Bridge Cabinet members to implement mechanism that will guarantee swift reaction or responses to inquiries of or emergencies forwarded to their private worlds from the homeland. Thank you once again for your presence here today and do accept our assurances of the assurances of our unalied support to your government as we eagerly await the resumption of the defense of our homeland by the Biafra Defense Forces. Long live Oyendu Biafra. Mazie Namdekuku Kano Ohamadike Wano Biafra. Long live His Excellency, our great Prime Minister Simon Epa Njoko Waki Bea. Long live our Acting Prime Minister, His Excellency Mazie Ogekere. Long live Aludu State. Long live Bridge, United States of Biafra. Thank you all and may God bless all of you for attending. Thank you.
You say, you are welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Honorable S A. All said and done. Uh, so the people of Aludu, uh, you've had the APM, you've had the S A. The gospel has been delivered. We must follow suit. So I'm welcoming the S A. Yeah, and congratulating the S A and then welcoming the APM because I am from Aludu. Uh, our next in the agenda is the proper welcoming, appreciation, showing of appreciation to the visit of our APM to Aludu. Because I do easy. Asna, if I could, if I could, there be a, no, no, more than I got. Um, I know we find a G, uh, S A, uh, the car I see in Maro. So as an only Aludu now, let us come out and welcome our brand, uh, APM. Gratify him, make him happy for visiting us today. In this process, please, short, short speech. Don't exceed two minutes. If you exceed two minutes, it will be counted as extract.
Two, two, two minutes is long.
Okay, I said don't exceed. Uh, yeah, do I, uh, don't exceed. So one minute is okay. So please come up and just, uh, 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 welcome our Prime Minister and then, um, uh, make him happy. Uh, as only Aludu, I will say, uh, APM, uh, with a hundred Ajema, you are welcome to Aludu, um, today. No, thank you very much. Please, we need your hands up. Please, we need your hands up. You're welcome, uh, our APM and his cabinet to Aludu today. Ah, I does a nature project, uh, and, and, and I check out.
Thank you, thank you.
And, uh, thank you, you are welcome. So please, um, okay, Honorable Nena, you are welcome. You have the mic.
Nde wo no.
There were. You are welcome.
There were Honorable Nena.
He say.
Aga do ni la mapo. Aludu ge utra ni udo na Biafran.
He say.
Teno angu gabu kani, na ha chukwue Kikabiama.
He say.
Ano meke lano, nde wo no.
You are welcome.
Yenina ene moko, ona aga.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yaineme. And it's in a Kegene, yana yaka, yainema aga.
Yes, yes.
Um, our APM, no koma, ayana sigi nde wo. Ya drege ma. Nde kanada jimosi si. Me hu were hundred Ajema Canadian, didi wa koma APM ayana Aludu.
Uh, konaga.
Koto ya ka.
Konaga.
You are welcome, man.
Hu mureka another hundreds Ajema. Di wetere oji, umu oki, nde nana.
Namba. Oji ano.
Nde wo.
Yeah, I'm a neta bubeda to oji.
Oji kade, oji kade, wa kade beto ya ka.
Oji, beni, 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 Honorable Neke, bananu tonya ngoma yo.
I'm a neyade, I'm a neyade. I got that oji oh.
Thank you.
You are welcome, man.
Nde wo.
Uh, hands up, please. There Aludu, you are welcome, APM. And the cabinet here, they are all no visit, please. No, we are see only general.
More hands, more hands. More hands. More hands. Soft music, soft music. Soft music.
I did, Van, 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 we have to play the other one.
Uh, yes, the passing car, you can play the passing car. While we move, while we wait for in the Aludu to wake up. I'm on the, honey, check I call him here, maybe I protest, honey, me, yeah. Please, Aludus, you welcome the part.
Nbe no kuma. Oma lo niwa.
When the music play, please raise your hands up. You will be proud of that.
Boy, yeah. At least now they try music where we can sing and dance. When we gave what to forgive. When did they make very many for New York? For my hometown, I cannot have here. Live it, what more? Oh, prison, what more?
Raise your hands up, please.
Cha!
So, thank you. Thank you. Uh, I hope we must have warmed up. Uh, this beautiful music is made, made in Aludu, uh, where we, uh, take up the hands. Uh, Mazie Onyeze, uh, go on, please. Onyeze, unmute yourself. Uh, Onyeze, Onyeze, go on.
Onyeze is muted again, unmute him.
Okay. Onyeze.
Muted, he's muted.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute him, yeah. So, uh, uh, go on.
He's muted still.
No, but not, not, he's out, he's unmuted now.
That's him, I mute himself, Onyeze.
Uh, 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 he's trying now, there's, uh, I know, he's trying to get it down.
The, the mic, the mic has been passed to him, that's my meeting, sir.
Onyeze, unmute yourself and.
Yeah, I've done so.
Yeah, okay. Go on. Onyeze, go on, we can hear you.
My message on.
So can he reach you out? Yeah, he is, but he's not a regular. He's not steady here. He's off and on, off and out. So, uh, can he reach you?
Yes, you know, you know, I have already sent him a message.
Okay, it's only that you may not be listening to you now. That is why I asked, because you asked.
He's still present in the house. He's still present. Why not call on him to see if he can hear?
No, he have a, he have another.
Okay, no problem. He will still reply my message, but I just want to do it now that I have time. That is why I'm contacting. No problem. Thank you.
Okay, you want to redeem it now? Is it what you mean?
Yeah, both the one of yesterday and the one of today. I want to redeem it now, so.
The one of today, has it been documented?
Yes. Five thousand, five thousand.
Yes, I did the one of yesterday. The total of the one of. Not giving it five thousand, so. So I want to.
Do you, do you have the number of the media team? Any of the media team?
My step.
All right, yeah, just contact Ramazi, any of the media teams, so that they will guide you on how to do that, okay?
No, normally, I normally, I normally pay through C O, uh, C, uh. I normally pay through solutions. So I normally pay to him, but I just want to make the payment now that I have the opportunity to do it.
You're not gonna make the payment. Just make the payment the same way you've been making it, okay? All right.
It's not good. It's excellent.
Yeah, just make it the same way you've been making it before.
No problem. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
What we can just do is to document it. Amazi, okay? Yeah, just document his play, then he's still gonna make the payment the same way he been making.
Okay, let me just find out. Is it the C O S you mean or C O A? Is it C O A, the Lagos admin? Is it?
Yes, yes, Lagos admin. That is my normally pay.
Or you said the C O S. That was where the misunderstanding that should come. Okay, C O A. You know, he's not here yet.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
I would, I would send a message to him, but he didn't reply as far as he normally do. That's why I wanted to know if he's here.
No, I said he's here before, before, because you mentioned the C O S, so I thought you, it's C O S.
He must, he must said he'll get to him, so let's move ahead.
Yeah, thank you very, thank you very much. So, honorable, honorable Nena, you have the mic?
Isaac, okay?
Yes, please.
Um, I didn't, I didn't hear when Aparawa was recognized. I was like, but I would be recognized.
No, I won't send him. Uh, okay. Okay, that's. Yeah, uh, 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 wait. Uh, I see him. He does come, come hi, do. Honorable Aparawa, you are, you are welcome. I, I did busy where I count, where I give change, you know what I mean? You are welcome. You know what, you know what, talk to us. Maybe he's still behind the, behind the scene. Uh, honorable Nena, you have the mic, please?
Honorable.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, wait, oh, wait, Jazza, God this time. I don't catch you. Um, Mazzy, okay?
Yeah.
Uh. So, every. Because I'm am this you many, were you in law?
I, I know, but.
You, you've been busted big time.
I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad.
You put your.
And you are welcome.
Update here, okay? I have updates.
Yes.
Um, Onyeze has been struggling. Onyeze not struggling, but since. Just sent a message now that she'd announce ten thousand naira for him. Ten thousand AJ. Ten thousand.
It's having announced.
Hello, Mark, can you hear me?
Uh, uh, yes, I, I think, uh, I think, uh, Isaac may go announce that, uh, that.
Uh, okay.
Uh, yes.
I want, I want to give my announcement.
It's the same one, the same.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, okay, uh, uh, thank you. Please, uh, welcome in the A P M, stay on. Come and appreciate him. He's a great man. It's not easy. To leave all his day activities today to come and grace your call. And yeah, Ludo, come out and appreciate our A P M. Hands up, please. We need your hands up, honorable Aparawa. You are welcome.
Oh, Mazzy, okay? Honorable, okay?
Yeah, Bridget New York, go ahead.
Yeah, I try to make.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, 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 one website, Onye na mweki send the receipt.
Send that to me, send that to me. Send you receipt.
Okay, okay, honorable Mecca. Okay. Uh, I want, I want to send. I send it to him.
Okay, so what I will do, I'mma afford the equivalent in dollar, then send that the receipt to, okay? Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, is that good for you?
Yeah, if, if you can sign, it's okay, then I forward it to him.
Okay, okay, no problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark.
Honorable love. They will, eh, dariwu, eh, dariwu. So eh, dariwuna, ah, ah, goo muage, eh, mehefa, ma, honorable, okay?
Eh, wundegenekwano. A P M, A P M.
Yeah, eh, dariwun.
Uh, okay.
A P M.
Not a problem, sir.
There, thank you. Thank you.
A P M O.
There.
Now that I have you, please check your message, okay? When you get a chance.
It's a worry. Thank you.
Hmm, okay.
Stella Udemba, please unmute yourself.
Stella Udemba.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're welcome.
There, no, there's too much noise in the background.
Are you from your side? Uh, I, I recall.
That's from Nena co-host.
Okay, is it from Nena? Sorry. Uh, honorable Nena, please mute. Honorable Nena, please, can you mute yourself? Uh, where can I locate herself?
Okay, she have muted.
Okay, okay. Also, uh, Stella, uh, go on, please. You're welcome.
There were no.
There were, what that Stella?
There were A P M greetings from here. And I greet everybody. Fine, fine, um.
Bishop, bishop, or mute, uh, mute yourself, please.
Uh, yes, okay, I've, I've muted.
Please, uh, Sister Stella, can you unmute yourself, please?
Was I called, please?
Sister Stella, unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Uh, I just want to thank everyone, um, I'm calling from the United States. And, um, I just want to appreciate A P M with, um, two hundred dollars.
Wow.
And the. Thank you.
There.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I'll send the receipt to my admin, um, Chinere. And I also want to appreciate everyone, especially those, um, in media. For all they do. I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You, thank you very much. Thank you.
I had this in here.
Thank you. Sister Stella, now that you actually mention our media, our media team, they have been doing a great job. From honorable Sonia Aparawa, Pastor Van Van Van, Bishop on five five five, Adabete. Uh, Biafran Oracle and Biafran Washman. All our media team, this fight, just like, uh, just like advisor, Honorable Makeo, by from Aludo. It's, this journey is not easy. It's a fight that you have to be ready. And media team, they have stand strong. They have shown that they are ready for this battle. And if you can look at the other side, what is going on, the chaos? The disunity, the misunderstanding within them. You will really give a hand of applause to the media team that we have. And if you notice something, you will find out that our media team, they are all, uh, they are doing the best they can, working tirelessly. And you can hear where they have this, uh, dysfunctional unit of chaos. And you're not gonna hear from the media team criticizing the government. But the Biafran Republic government in Azar don't condition the media team how they do their job. Because they know what is right. They know what to do. They know what to say. We have the same ideology, the same goal, we think alike, not like the other side. Where some can be moot, some can, the other side, the fallen angel, the breakaway team group. Where, when you speak, they moot you. They ask you to shut up. They ask you to disappear. They try to condition you to their narrative of force. Positively accusing blackmailing people, slandering. There's this news going on today about somebody. I don't really want to mention them because they are not relevant as long as I'm concerned. It's just the Biafran people that I'm worried about. Why are they not seeing what I'm seeing? Why do they have ear and they don't hear? Why do they have eyes and they don't see? How long will one fool you? You can just see the Biafran Republic government in Azar and the breakaway team is just too separate. You can just tell which side is doing the right thing. Whose side align with the light, the sun? Whose side align with the darkness of nation? The other side, from the lawyer, the lobby, the media, the website, the government. Disagree with them. What that tells you? To the extent that they have to go and register their chambolary group. Our people. How long will someone fool you? We can see the chaos, the camp of the other side, to the extent that today. One of the breakaway of their camp again, because that, I don't want to actually have breakaway, because, uh, she might go and form her own paraly government or group. Was talking about Solomon. Solomon, watching for over a year, he's just there as Minister of Defense. But our Prime Minister have relieved him of his duty, that he didn't make it public. Solomon, in which I don't have access with what is going on. He done. But when our Prime Minister was called for questioning, he jumped out. To say, I'm the Minister of Defense, like he know all. He said betrayal. Everything he have laid his hand, since they made him the Minister of Defense, is disaster. No result. No result. Of which he get to a time we just tired of him. And the last conversation I, I have with him, I ask him, why, why is he doing what he's doing? And I asked this, uh, young or old man, I will call him, I say, Solomon. You know, you don't have anything to do with what is going on back home. And I let him know that he have been relieved us of his duty. And he told me. If he don't have anything to do, what do I suggest he should do? I advise him, since our Prime Minister did not made it public, he should just lay low. And he grabbed the opportunity, because our P M is not here, align himself with the criminal that he's following, Gosi. And, uh, they work together, you know, they say bed of the first, uh, bed of the same feather flies together. Two of them, Timo, to actually fight our liberation, to fight our angel. And Solomon have to align himself to start recruiting, working with those that we have problem with. Working with our enemies. It's a dangerous, when we talk about. I don't really want to mention Ngazi name, that's why I haven't mentioned her name throughout today, but when we talk about, remember Solomon. In which is as bad as Ngazi. And the one called Onyame. And this other man in New Jersey called Reverend Valentine or whatever. It was a guy man, I think I, I saw him at New Jersey when I went for, uh, event. All these are all criminals, evil people. Please, all of you that is standing in the path of the truth, please, I beg you, remain where you are. Very soon, very soon. Very soon, you all will see what is going to happen. The truth is coming out every day by day. One of the born shared truths today is that Solomon is working with Caterpillar. Solomon is recruiting, working with night, the terror, the terrorists. The same people that we are fighting against. His hand is not clean. And don't associate yourself with such people. And if you are contributing money, giving Ngazi and her group. You are contributing money, giving them to fight us. That is the truth. One of their member confessed today, Adadi Rama, and she still have a lot to say. About them, you know, but, uh, 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 she is somebody that, uh, we know she's unstable, we know she know what she doing. She, she's somebody that she be fighting this movement. I think it's time that she will start confessing. Time is coming. When she will come and confess and let the whole Biafran know. All the lies, they have lied against me, they have lied against everybody. Time is coming. All of them will confess one after another. Ngazi yesterday was yelling, cursing everybody, had cursed a lawyer of our Prime Minister, cursed our lobby, cursed our lawyer, cursed everything possible. That madness that being in secret, they will come out, that madness will come in public. I don't know why people will see all this red flag and this tea decide to follow. Biafras, can't you read the handwriting in the wall? In few weeks, we'll be having some crucial meeting in Washington. Like I do said. I love resort. I'm not social media person. I'm not somebody who like to run my mouth, talk, talk for people to praise me. That I'm speaking, I'm speaking. I want Biafran people to be seeing the diplomatic result, because at the end of the day, that is one of the thing that will give us our freedom. In Washington, they say we are, this year so far, we are doing really good. We are building bridges. Three days ago. Uh, yeah, it was three days ago, I have a privilege to meet, uh, with one of the senators. Of which the Amazonia, this haven't been made public. So the Amazonias were there. The Eritra president there as well, was a meaningful one. So we are building bridges. We are moving on. And the breakaway group, they can do whatever they are doing, but we are at where matters. We are doing what matters. What we, actually by tomorrow. I'm gonna be posting the press, uh, release of the meeting. And with the pictures of the Amazonia and the Eritra. So our sister nation, Amazonia, this is the, uh, fourth time we'll be meeting this year at Trump inauguration. And we also met, uh, we also met at the, uh, one of the congressmen and the senator again. So we are building bridges every day. And in days and weeks to come. There's more, of meetings that already be scheduled with the members of the Congress. As we are pushing our case to Washington. And then if you see, they can be doing what they are doing. But that won't change, that won't move us. We know what we, what we totally help us in our cause to our destination. This diplomatic war, I call it war, because when you meet with these congressmen and women. You take your case to them, and you let them know what is going on and the reason why. We need Biafran and the, the reason why they will be on our side and support us. Over a hundred percent of all the congressmen and women that we have met. They are on our side. We are, are the right part. We are doing the right thing. Department. U S Department of Justice actually acknowledge us. They know what we are doing. And we actually send a congratulation letter to the Office of the President of America, J F Trump. He acknowledged with response. So we didn't just go online to congratulate him. We send a letter to White House, to the Office of J, Donna J, John Trump. J is John, Donna J, John Trump. And his office acknowledged our letter. With the details of the letter and they respond. The response is not what I will be telling you, you'll hear publicly, but we are doing the right thing. Want every of us to be resilient. Just believe that we are in the right part. Things are happening, not everything. If I don't tell you now that. We have a meeting with, uh, a senator couple days ago. Yeah, I didn't post it, haven't been public. If, yeah, and it happened, the Amazonias were there, the Eritra, we are there. So things are happening. But they might try to delay our total freedom. That don't mean that we are not going to be free. And the reason why Bianco Juco is doing what she is doing is because I believe her father or her generation is from the lineage of our enemy, the Fulani people. Look at her complexion. She's not a Biafran.
What about you? No, uh, uh, eh, eh, P M, her, her father, her father have a negative, uh, uh, story. Her father, oh no, since you know, uh.
Oh, no, oh, no, I bet.
Since you know, it's a P M.
Yes.
That evil woman. That evil woman. I, I, I came across a video.
She is greedy.
That woman was talking about, uh, how they will sell oil to Europe and this. Ask this stupid woman if her father have any oil in Biafran land. The oil belong to the Biafran people. And this evil woman want to use. And this evil woman want to use what we have to fight us.
Yes.
And relocate, part out of Biafran land, leave us alone.
Yeah, that was, that was it.
Well, I shake my head when I watch that video, talking about how they wanna build relationship with the Europeans and this and that with who's oil. The oil from Biafran land. If you, any member of so-called Bianca evil woman watching what I'm saying. Shame to all the entire family of Bianca. Until you all will come out publicly apologize to Biafrans and disassociate yourself from that evil. I don't even know if she even have children at all. How will she feel like if a terrorist have to come rape her or rape her children? How will she feel like if she will wash all these terrorists, killing her loved ones? If she a Biafran, she not gonna allow. What is happening in our land today? She will speak up if she believe in her husband, if she believe in the right course. Rather this evil woman decide to align herself with angels of darkness. This evil woman decide to work with a terrorist vice president, CEO, owner of Boko Haram, Chetima. This evil woman align and work hard to make sure that our Prime Minister will find it difficult. But she failed, she's evil and her entire family, the land of Biafra will reject them. Unless any member of her family disassociate themselves from her. If not, anything they do in Biafran land will, will turn to evil, that land will never bless that family. Bianca the Sabo, the Fulani woman. I don't know how we get here, she's not a Biafran and she shouldn't be treated as a Biafran. Anybody that have decide to betray Biafra is not a true Biafran. Biafrans don't kill its own.
That's true.
Just look at the history of all the betrayers. You will find out they are not Biafrans. From Russia, Sukura Usa, to Hope Uza, just look at all of them. Here you also get to Saludo. When you look at Saludo, with his complexion and everything, you can tell Saludo is not even a Biafran. Go do their DNA, take my word. Biafrans are what we call Onulubewan Niabulosu.
That's true.
Now hurt themselves, they love themselves. Any Sabos in Biafran land, from Ngosi or Abesidem. If you do, go deep down, you will find out they have something to do with our enemy. They have something to do with the terrorist Fulani, they ha, they are our enemies. I'm a true Biafran and I have the true Biafran blood in me. Biafrans don't hurt a fly. Biafrans don't harm or a fly, that's what I mean, they don't kill their own. Any Sabo in Biafran land, mark my word, that person is not a Biafran. If you go deep down, you will find out that this person is not a Biafran. Bianca Sabo Fulani, think the name we changed from Bianca, uh, Ojuku, I don't, Ojuku is not there, is, uh, nothing like Bianca Ojuku.
That's true.
Bianca the Fulani, you better leave Biafran land alone. Relocate, move to your Fulani land. And, uh, go and live your better life in the north. Since you align yourself with the terrorists, since you align yourself with our enemies. If you are true Biafran, Bianca, you will not let the terrorist Nigeria come in Biafran land and kill Biafrans, rape Biafrans. To the extent you try to sell our resources to fight us, it won't be well with you.
He said.
The Biafran people know what to do. The Biafran land know what to do, the God of Biafra know what to do. Biafrans, Uno Anugo. Biafrans, you know your enemy, you know those that are fighting you. You know those that are bringing the terrorists to fight you. You know what to do, you know how to fight, you know how to defend, you know what is right. If you know what is right, do it. If you in your land and you allow the terrorists to run you over. You allow them to Islamize you, to kill you, to rape your wife, your children. I don't know what I would tell you, that means a man. But if you're not a, am I here game? A word is enough for the wise, but I wanna leave this last word for Biafrans. All the whole people that are fighting us, that claim to be Biafrans. I'm telling you today, they are not Biafrans. If they are Biafrans, they will protect you. They will save you. They will not let you drown in a river. If they see you drowning, they will come and drag you out and save you. But if they allow you while they see you drowning, that means they are not with you. All these people that give all of us sleepless night, they are not Biafrans. Mark them as not Biafrans, mark them as enemy of Biafrans.
That's true.
They are enemy of the state, they are not Biafrans. If they can bring the terrorist people, have agreement with them to kill you. They are not with you and as such, they are your enemy. You know what to do, I'm not telling you what to do, you already know. And you know those that are fighting for you, support them. Months ago, when I was being accused, some have accused me that Nigerian government uh, paid me one hundred and fifty million to fight them, that accusation has started long time ago. They accuse our leader Mazin Nandikan, they accuse, uh, our Prime Minister Mazzi Simon Ewa. Now they accusing me. So, you telling me that the Nigerian government gave me one hundred and fifty million to fight them, is that correct? Who is fooling who? Who is fooling who? If you are true Biafran, don't listen to lies and biases. Don't listen to all these propagandas, blackmailing. We are glad that they start confessing. One of the confession happened today. That Solomon Nkoshia is Sabo. I have known that months ago. That Solomon Nkoshia is working with our enemy and known that months ago. That Solomon Nkoshia is working with Caterpillar. Then, how does Solomon Nkoshia get the money to work with Caterpillar? From Ngosi or Abesid. So, if you indict Solomon, who else do you indict? Ngosi and her group. If you indict Ngosi, who else do you indict? All the ones that are contributing the money for Ngosi, they are part of it. So, when they start crying, our land is bleeding. If you one of those that are sponsoring Ngosi, it's your fault as well, you are indicted for that. Because if you provide the money for Ngosi or Abesid, Ngosi will not provide the money to Solomon. Solomon will now mobilize, wo, work with Caterpillar, Ibu Bago and others. So, Biafrans, it's time you start asking questions. Like the phone reason that was heard by Ngosi and her group yesterday. What is she doing with it? What is she doing with the phone? Rather than using the phone to fund those that will fight against us. To fund and work with the Nigerian terrorist state. Just like I told, the admin of Aludo, if he's ready to fight. We have a lot of enemies, we have enemies within. So, it's true, we are fighting both the enemies within and the enemies outside. Are we all ready to fight? Buckle up your seatbelt. Our town hall meeting we had two weeks ago. The Vice President of Ambazonia Governing Council made it clear that the worst enemy to fight against is the enemy within. And we have the enemies within, we can see them, we know who they are. So, whatever we do to defeat them, do it is the right thing. Stop funding the enemy within, then Tike. Just because you don't like me, just because my impact, you hate it. If you don't like me, please, love Biafran people. Don't crucify Biafran people because of me. You can take that on me on personal level, but anything that we affect the people of Biafran, please don't do it. If you hate me, you have the right to hate me, but don't hate what I'm doing. Because I'm fighting a just cause, I'm fighting the right fight, not just for me. If you don't like how I speak, I'm sorry. But I want you to like what I'm doing. I want you to know I'm fighting for you and for myself and for Biafran at large. Don't take because of my personality, I'm fight against the Biafran people. Our Prime Minister Mazzi Simon Ewa. At the time, a lot of Biafrans don't like him as well because of where he from. Because they despise his state, because they look down on the state where he from. If you a Biafran, don't practice evil. Please, we are here to restore Biafran. I'm not here just to restore the state that I'm from, but the entire Biafran. Do the right thing, the right thing is right in front of us for us to fight and get our freedom. Thank you, Ndeu, I think we are spend, uh,
Thank you.
We have, we have some hands, we have some hands up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, thank you, um, uh, as you will be preparing, I think I do, uh, we do, uh, for the closing remark. But we will take the hands that are up and then, uh, we, um, how do we, Mazze. Uh, yes, okay, um, Mazze Ikachukwu, we are starting from you. Ikachukwu, Ikachukwu, uh, please one minute, please.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, good evening everyone. Uh, it's Mupla, yeah, uh, uh, from Aldumayu. Uh, I, I had donated before thirteen thousand before, so we are adding it more five thousand, making eighteen thousand.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Bishop.
Fifteen thousand, right?
Yeah.
Plus five, fifteen, thank you.
Okay, good night.
Uh, Bishop.
Bishop.
Ah, that Zion.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Everybody that is here, I don't know, is that my turn?
Yeah.
Was that called?
Yes, yes, uh.
Aludo, I thank God for the success of today and I pray that for future, it will be all success or whatever you do. Yeah, I thank God for our PM, PM, I just want to give a personal accolade that you've spoken so well this evening.
APM, okay, PM.
Yes, uh, A, APM, yeah. May God, um, bless you and I wish Biafran will support you. Um, there's another thing said about that, I don't know, um, if anybody followed this place sometime ago. There is a condition, somebody said it's a medical condition that, um, that, um, that, uh, suffering. It's unstable, mentally, physically, emotionally, she's unstable. And that condition, condition is called psychophobia, uh, maperum.
From name, what do you want to?
Bam, bam, bam has known about his, uh, his program. I thank God, so you know, I thank God so much and I want to support this with fifty, um, uh, euros, fifty euros, normal say.
Uh.
God bless you. Uh, yeah, okay.
Uh, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. So, um, Californian admin. California admin, okay, sorry, Califor.
You have spoken, do you need to say something again, your hand is still up?
I think he should just take down the hand.
Okay, okay, he did.
What's your name, your name?
California admin. Okay, go to the next one.
California admin, thank you. Uche, one, one, two. One, one, two. You're welcome, sir.
If he's not ready. Yeah, I, I, I'm ready, I'm ready, but, uh, I'm annoyed now. My honor, Mazze okay, Mazze okay, you annoyed me now, not Mazze. I'm not Sabo.
Elepah.
I'm not Uche.
Remember, I have only one minute.
Thank you. I support, I support, uh, yeah, no, later, I supported with the APM, uh, with twenty A JMA for, on behalf of, for Lo State, Alomos Register. And I paid, I paid the, my payment for both the last. And I paid the my payment about the last week Saturday. Last week Saturday and yesterday on, I paid altogether. Mazzy okay, I send it to, you will see it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will note it to the uh to the S uh uh because it's now combined receipt, is it for a Germany and uh. And this one combined.
Where, where is he paying to?
Uh he paid it already in the website. Uh sorry.
So what would it cost?
Uh yes, I I am John, I'm not, so I bought. Uh the ones for Germany, so I will um. Uh give you a notice of it so that.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
How come the way low, Mazzy okay?
Iwoma, uh you are nice, please, you are one minute.
Hello, there were no. Actually, fifty A J M supporter. Um APM said, visit to Aludo today.
Hello.
Thank you.
Uh because um. It could have been hard chatting people, invited their um their information.
No, I know I'm not the chat group.
Okay.
Which county are you from, please? Which county?
Umime.
Umime.
Umime, God bless you.
Okay, because I will send my receipt to uh Bunnyface um uh UK admin.
Okay, so uh I will get your information from Bunnyface.
Yes.
Okay, so somebody.
Yes, I'm my.
Okay.
Thank you.
Iwoma now UK.
Uh yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Mazze Chukuma.
Okay, Chukwu.
Chukuma, okay.
Yeah, as as an invitee, I had to honor the invitation, I saw, so.
Uh it's not going for you.
Uh I wanna thank um.
Yes, it was a warrior one.
Uh yeah, I don't know, um I thank all of you, yes sir, you people mean a lot, yes sir, to to be friends right now. Most especially for using your common sense to stand on the path of truth. Chukokike will bless you all. I also wanna give my APM, uh son, you know, I've just, I was just watching him talking today and I was like. Chukokike is great because it's just like every day it continues to transition, yes sir, you know that position of our PM. Is not an easy one, is not an easy gap to fill and every day by day. The APM continues to grow in strength, more wisdom, more knowledge. So I I pray that Chukokike will continue to bless him and see him through and also may the ancestors continue to at least. Guide him so that he can continue to lead us to the return of our PM. And finally, I wanna say. You see those who fail to study history, history is always bound to repeat itself. And I want to let those people who are part of the. Who are part of the 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 organized sabotages, I want you all to know that at the end of every liberation, there's always gonna be a reckoning. Just as in the days of the Holocaust. After the Jewish people liberated themselves. They had what they called the Nuremberg Trial whereby all those who perpetrated genocide against the Jewish people. Were brought to book and they faced justice. So it's just the same way, you all are gonna face the Biafran Justice Court when Biafran is fully restored. So continue to wallow in your ignorance, continue to follow that chief of stupidity, that idiotic woman. Yes, she was born to sabotage Biafran, but at the end of the day, she'll be defeated. So I will not wanna say much, I was invited here, I had to honor that invitation, so I'm gonna gee. Uh let me, I will use thirty A J M to support this fundraising for Lo State.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, you're welcome.
Minister Chukuma, Chukwu, uh please, you said thirty A G for the fund, then which one, what about the one for the Tahoe? Meeting? Okay, I come can the name do.
Okay, but go on, go on, yes.
Yeah, I said this our sister from Canada. The sister Unice. Oh gee, forty A J M. Where the man are, where the man are the funds raising? Uh Mazzy Omega, where the ten thousand A J M, make fundraiser. One day home, where the ten thousand A J M, fundraiser. After, I wonder Unice forty thousand A J. A J M or A J? A J?
A J.
Forty thousand. That Mazzy Omega, ten thousand A J. Good, this is when you watch it. Wada Iwoma, ten thousand A J. Wada Rose, ten thousand A J. Together with the ten, ten thousand A J, Haji, Madaboji, Henne, eighty seven thousand A J, already have been paid to my account.
Thank you, thank you.
Very much, thank you very much.
There were.
Okay. I think that's the last.
So yeah, I think that is the last hand uh in my list.
It's Chukuma, still raising his hand.
No, that's the odd one. Uh odd hand, so we have no more hands, so um S uh wanna um. I'll take you over so that uh camera uh a little and other. APM for the uh closing remark or anyhow.
Um there, there were no. There were. Visitors, bridge members. Ekelemono, ndewon. And they committed, we will continue. Aludo will continue. Our fundraiser will continue again every month as usual. Uh we have more to talk on the fuzzy than they say. Uche, uche one one, uche one one two. I want to like, okay. Okay.
I think uh Mazze Uche one one two have his hand up.
A one one two.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I I make a mistake. I'm sorry, I want to correct my support to APM from Lo State on behalf of Lo State. I is twenty five dollar, twenty five A J M, twenty five A J M, sorry. Not twenty A J M, twenty five, yeah, because I have paid, thank you.
Mazzy okay, I am here, uh so what, are you done?
Uh yes, we are, we are done, um S uh um um da, are you through with the closing remark?
Please, uh yes, I'm true.
Okay, let me use, let me remind uh. Biafrans. Uh this development uh that will happen on the thirteenth. And fourteenth, that is uh Thursday and Friday. It's about the killing. That be happening in Biafranland. And the Biafran people. Are not happy about it. And we want to send a loud message as well. The territory of Biafran belong to Biafran. So and this will be. Demanded for the release of our leader Mazin Nandikan. And also the release of. Our Prime Minister that is detained in Finland. And also we remember the victims. Those that have been killed by the Nigerian state. In recent days and week. The killing is just too much, just unbearable, heartbreaking. So the Biafran people, we use this opportunity. To show their support and we mourn our loved ones as well. And we will. We, we use these days. To ask ourselves question. We use this day to remember the reason why Biafran decide to sit at home. We really need to reflect on these days. Because our people can't just be killed like chicken. We have to defend our land. We have to control our land. We need to let the terrorist country called Nigeria, that the land belonged to us. And we'll still use this to demonstrate. To the family of the victims. That is the family of Biafrans, because this our beloved ones. That we are all in this together. That we are not happy about what is happening in our land. So we need to send a strong message. To those that occupy our land and the terrorists. That come to kill us. And the instruments. That the terrorist government is using, those that are working with. The government of Nigeria, to let them know that this land. Is Biafranland, is not Nigerianland. Please. The Biafran Republic Government in Eza. Is endorsing. What the homeland de facto government is doing. Because we are all in this together. So any decision they come with. Will be behind it. So the de facto government in homeland. Wish the Director. Of Information. Of the Defense. General. Holy Ghost. Have signed this. And advise Biafrans to please. Please. Sit at home. So we can demonstrate. That we are not happy about what is going on in our land. And the release of our leader Mazin Nandikan and our Prime Minister as well, please save the date, thirteenth. And fourteen of next week of February. There will be a total lockdown. With the homeland de facto government. Have mandate. The Biafran people to please obey this date, thank you.
Um, thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we love you.
PM, there were, there were.
Stay safe, stay safe, you look well.
Thank you everybody, thank you for coming.
Thank you, honorable, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I sent you a message, are you still coming live? I know it's kinda late. No, no, I'm just, you know, it's not something I'm asking, but you said that you are coming back to continue where you started before.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, oh love one ten ten.
No, she's, no, she's in love, remember, okay, okay. I will never leave you in my life.
I'm good love, I'm good love, I'm good enough. Yeah. Yes, we can go off, eh, thank you.